Be public, so we'll move past that. Our first item is considering approval of minutes. I sent a few editorial changes that I think everyone was copied on.
Yeah, I was just thinking, was Jen's resignation effective immediately?
No, 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 Jen was planning to be here remotely and she just sent us a text saying her grandmother has had a major part.
Yeah.
And she has to get arrangements to go out, so she will not be here.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I know, she's still very much part of this, but unfortunately has had a family emergency take over tonight. So is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Sam moves. Second, Cara seconds, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
If it was a yes. Okay, that passes.
John, did you send them to my email, the changes? I don't, I didn't.
Oh, okay, I'll make sure you get it.
Thank you.
I think I sent it to the trustees, trustees email, so, but I didn't.
They were in like the body of, like an email with other stuff in it.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'll make sure I get it to you. Let me make a note. Because my limited brain doesn't remember things. Minute changes. Okay, great. And so our first item is Sophia Suraj, thank you for being here. Some of you like me may have got an email that said, here's your impact, and you said, what? So Sophia is going to initiate us into the mysteries.
Sam, thank you for having me. For folks who maybe don't remember, I'm Sophia Suraj. She heard her pronouns and I'm the manager of volunteer services at the Boulder Public Library. I've been here about a year and I'm just here to tell you a little bit about GivePulse today. I'm going to go ahead and screen share. So you all can see what I'm talking about. So just quickly, GivePulse is our new volunteer management system. It's the same one that CU Boulder uses, so we're trying to kind of get rid of any barriers to volunteering across different organizations in our local community. And just to be more easily able to kind of network and share. This is what our page looks like. The URL is stretched out when you visit the page, but you can simply direct folks to boulderlibrary.givepulse.com. We chose that so it's easy to remember, it's not an alphabet soup, you know, acronym, it's pretty straightforward. So Boulder Library, givepulse.com, excuse me. Just a quick orientation to the page. This is the main shebang. So we have the homepage with a description of the library's mission. And then volunteer opportunities, these are going to be like one-time opportunities. Open applications, things people can kind of poke around and apply for, or just sign up to kind of dip their feet in the water. And get more connected with volunteering. I would say these are mostly low commitment, but they have really specific descriptions on each one, so folks know what they're signing up for. Just moving right along this main menu bar, we have community partners. So the system allows us to network and affiliate with other organizations that are on the platform. In my previous role at CU Boulder, I helped kind of build out a lot of these pages for local community partners as a part of my job. And so I was able to affiliate with them pretty easily, just in case it's useful for our volunteers and patrons to be able to connect with other opportunities. Although we want to kind of keep our volunteers for ourselves if we can. And then moving along, we have programs. So this is a list of our ongoing library programs that work directly with volunteers or that volunteers directly impact. And so you can explore these, we have quite a few key areas. And then finally, we have impacts, which I'll show you all how to log. The system basically tracks volunteer contributions as impacts. These are most often hours served, but it's more flexible, so the system allows us to be a little bit more nuanced with it. So it's not just hours, it could be like photographs scanned or digitized at Carnegie Library. It could be donations sorted. That kind of item, or it may be like, you know, however many used books we diverted from the landfill. So it kind of allows us to tell our story in a little bit more of a qualitative manner, which is helpful. And then finally, we have resources on this main page. So I have just shared or linked to a few different resources I thought would be helpful to people volunteering at the library, such as a quick guide for users, how to use the platform. And then how to highlight your volunteer experience for job opportunities. So just kind of linked to a resource that I found that allows people to kind of work on their next transition. I'm going to go ahead and, oh, is that a little bit in the way? If I can scoot my window. Sorry.
I see we can go to the page directly from the library website, right? From the volunteer link, yeah, that is nice.
I'm sorry, are you able to move that or is that me?
Oh, yeah.
The, sorry, our team. I just need to get to that right-hand corner, thank you Sophia. So just a few quick notes, anyone can join the volunteer page by clicking join. They just basically follow the page and then they can learn about opportunities anytime they would like. And then up here for accessibility, a few notes, we can change to dark view if that's easier for folks to see. The system content also translates into English, Spanish, and French. So if somebody speaks one of those languages as their first language, they can explore through their first language. Okay, so we can talk a little bit about y'all being in GivePulse. So you all have been added to GivePulse, hopefully you created a password to get logged in. If you haven't, I can help you. But basically, you just log in here. And you are a member of the page. We have already added you to the Boulder Public Library Board of Trustees group. So you will have your volunteer hours all housed within one group and we can see all your contributions at the end of the year. So now that I'm logged in, I would just go up here where I see my face and I can go to dashboard. This is going to be my user dashboard. So you'll see this when you log in. Quick note, there's a little tutorial video built right in here. One great thing about the platform is it has these kind of embedded training materials that make it a little bit more user-friendly. So you can watch that, you can also contact support directly if you run into anything tricky. If you go to groups here, you will be able to find the Boulder Public Library Board of Trustees. I have a bunch of groups because I'm admin for all of them, so please ignore the kind of scary looking list there. But here's our Boulder Library District Board of Trustees group. And you all, you know, don't have to worry about this too much managing it, Celia and I can help you. Basically, we have you registered for your expected meetings already. So those impacts and hours you spend in meeting time are already accounted for, you don't have to worry about it. In terms of work that you do for the board outside of our meetings, we are going to want you to add those impacts. So if you want to, right from the Board of Trustees page, anytime, you can just click on this button, add impact. And then you have the option to link it to an event. If you all had a meeting and maybe you did additional work or you stayed late, you can add it to an existing meeting. Or if you just did work outside of meeting time on your own, you can put the dates, the time, and a little note about what you did. And you can keep it pretty straightforward, it's just to capture really your work. And as Johnny noted, you can also add a timesheet if you just like to track your hours and you don't want to add them every time, you can do a bulk add through the add timesheet function.
Some parts of lawyer training never die.
Yeah, so again, if you just go up to your user dashboard. Really quick and easy, if you go to groups, let's say, I'll pull it up again. You don't even have to click into the group all the way if you're in a rush. You can just go right here to where your group is listed and you can go add impact from right there. The tricky thing with GivePulse is there's sometimes multiple ways to do one thing, so it can be a little bit hard to learn, just if your brain is like mine, where I'm like trying to build the new synapse and it doesn't quite go. But just add impact, again, those are going to be any kind of free-floating impact or service work you do outside of your kind of structured meetings. You don't have to worry about the meetings because Celia and I will arrange for those together so that you don't have to worry about it. Any questions?
Is that how any library volunteer would log their hours, essentially what we've just seen?
Okay. Yes, so they all are in different groups and programs. And some of their hours might already be scheduled through a shift or they might add them on their own.
And is that mobile device friendly?
It is, yes, that's a great question, there is a mobile app that you can download and I'm happy to send the link to that if that's helpful.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. And there are great resources, if you ever get stuck. I'll send you the link to the mobile app and then also the instructions for kind of what it looks like and how to use it. Sorry, I didn't think of that. Great, yeah.
I'm sorry, you said we should have gotten something about this already?
Yes, so you have an account already and I can send you a like claim your account email and then you'll just create your password.
Okay, I didn't know if you should have already, because I don't.
It's probably in there, but I'll send it. Sorry. I will get that taken care of for you.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Perfect, so I will go ahead and send that to you, I'm going to stop sharing just so I can not show everyone your.
This is not an urgent thing, I was just making, wasn't sure.
I can get that to you all tomorrow, thanks.
I don't know what the old system for volunteers was, but I'm recalling a conversation now with a volunteer had shared that they found it difficult to use. So this seems pretty simple.
Yes.
I don't know their level of skill, but.
Yeah, I would say this one. You know, we chose in part because it is a lot more user-friendly and they also have a dedicated team to check for accessibility and make sure that it's up to Colorado standards for accessibility. And they have a dedicated team that uses adaptive devices and things, so that felt really important to us, just given the community that we work with.
And the city just stayed with their old system.
They're going to move to this.
Yeah, I think in November.
Good.
Yeah.
This is definitely better than Campia.
And it's a lot more cost-effective, so we love that.
Good.
Yes, thank you so much, please feel free to reach out to me.
Let's see if Doug or Sylvia have any questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I just added my impact for tonight's meeting. So it was pretty easy.
I'm just curious about, I mean, are, will you be tracking to ensure that the folks that were volunteering before are able to comfortably transition to use the new system? I mean, is there a way you would be able to do that?
Yeah, so we have all of our active volunteers are up and running in the system. We are able to transfer them over and into their groups with the help of GivePulse. Yeah, great question, it's, and most of the frustrations I've heard from volunteers, it seems that it's less about the system itself and more about just the challenges of learning something new or technology maybe feeling overwhelming at times. But yeah. And staff seem to be doing okay with the transition as well.
And the email file is clearly working because I'm getting regular, well, I mean, regular volunteer opportunity emails, so, yeah.
I had another question though, will, will volunteers use this to sign up for volunteer opportunities as well?
Yes. That's a great question. So absolutely, I'll quick share my screen again. So this is really like our online hub for volunteerism at the library. So that is, you know, our way of posting and sharing about volunteer opportunities, tracking, managing data, managing applications. We can also, you know, do little reflections with volunteers. So anytime somebody wants to volunteer, they would go to volunteer opportunities right here. And then they can find things that they can sign up for or learn more about. And then similarly for programs, these are kind of our longstanding programs that are supported by ongoing volunteers. And these opportunities really require like training and a specific commitment. So I like to tell people they can kind of dip their feet in the water with the one-time opportunities and get connected and see what they like. And then as we recruit for these longer kind of community, sorry, community needs that we're serving in a more long-term capacity, they can sign up for those. Yeah. Thank you all for your questions. Anytime you all need help, you can also, from this homepage or from within your group, you can message us directly and you can contact GivePulse directly if for whatever reason you have a more time-sensitive issue. But yeah, they're super responsive and helpful, so please feel free to message them if you need help.
And I can speak from personal experience as a volunteer, especially around J L S, that Sophia and her team are just super at managing the volunteers, at listening to them and providing feedback and training and, and yeah.
Thank you.
Really, really a good team.
Thank you, it's a lot of fun, thank you all for all of your volunteer work and helping us get more volunteers involved and just let me know how I can support you all.
Great, yeah, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate you coming on short notice.
Thank you.
Okay, so our main order of business on the trustee part is to adopt the bylaw amendments. Jennifer sent some, she found some errors, thank goodness we have people who read them closely. I can go over those with you to see what had changed, if they were a big deal. In the, let's see, in paragraph three, under the Boulder Library Foundation, we didn't have library in a section, so we added that. And then in the various references to secretary treasurer, you may recall that last meeting, we decided we would eliminate the office of secretary. And there were a couple of places where we still just had secretary slash treasurer in the bylaws. And Jen flagged those and I took those out and that's cleaned up. So we do have, there's a link in the chat to the cleaned up version as going, as it stands now. Does anyone have any other changes to the bylaws?
There was one other typo.
Okay.
It was in the, I just found it, I'm sorry, I was going to send it.
All right, as long as you find it, good thing.
So under the duties of officers, president, the first bullet.
Yeah.
Says tie, should say time.
Oh, yes, great, thank you, yes, good eye. I'm a terrible editor, so I really appreciate you guys doing that. My husband used to edit all my papers when I was in law school.
That's the only thing I saw.
Okay, any other changes? Okay, can we get any motion to approve the bylaws? Okay, Sam moves to approve. Cara can second, all those in favor? Got three here, Doug, Sylvia, okay, great, it passes, wonderful, thank you. Director updates.
Yes, thank you very much. I wrote this over a week ago and then I never got around to updating it, so I will update it as we go. So the cyber insurance, we've actually signed the contract at this point, so we have the basic coverage needs met. And we're refining that to some extent. The North Boulder Library is currently on schedule and we're looking at an April, mid-April turnover time for occupancy. We are, the city is allowing some shipments of things to be able to go in earlier than the occupancy rate, but obviously we can't get people in there to do any work. But by, by late April, early May, we plan to have staff in the building and setting up shelves and moving furniture and unpacking boxes and boxes of books. The schedules for the roadway, the parking lot are, will coincide with the April 15th turnover point. And the connection point in the Meadows Mobile Home Park has already been done. And that will be opened when we open the library, so we won't, we will open it and pay for maintenance, but that connection was already done. So the, we are also, I just wanted to update you, like, there.
Before you do that, can I go back to a quick question on the mobile home park? So this is the mobile home park to the east.
Yes.
We also have a connection to the mobile home park across Broadway.
It's the underpass, right, so the underpass for the Ponderosa Meadows Mobile Home Park is the one to the east.
Okay.
That's roughly 700 units, the, the one, Ponderosa is owned by the city and it's on the west side of Broadway. The underpass is the connection. And I think they're just under 50 units in that park, although they've been replacing manufactured homes with fixed homes. And that process is still underway.
Great, thank you.
Not sure what the final number will be. The, the connection to the manufactured home community is, because the residents who are right there and can see the library, at present would have to walk all the way down to 19th Street and take either Violet or, what's the one, north? To walk around, right, so that was a critical point for us when we were building and we got an easement and the landlord agreed to allow for.
That's great.
The email migration, we're set to go and I, I think it's going to be relatively simple for everyone. Amy Shum will send out an email to each of you and it's, but you will be providing your email, both to your Boulder Library Gmail account plus the password, which will enable him to do it. And that seems to me that would may present, because you never switched to, you did it to your special email, to your own email.
My personal email, yeah, I, I put all of my library-related emails into one folder.
Okay.
So hopefully that, yeah.
Yeah. Good. Then the space reconfiguration plan is well underway. So if you remember in the budget this year, we had a, say, a big chunk of change assigned to reconfiguring office spaces to accommodate the influx of something like 20-plus people of internal services that we would be adding to the team. Those people are coming on, I mean, the first few started in, in January, soon after the new year. There will be a group more, which is doubling that number, that will begin by March 1st, but I think February 26th to 28th is their first, is their start date. And so the plan is well underway, we have not placed the furniture order yet, but at present, it looks like we're breaking it up into two phases. If there is any space reconfiguration that needs to be done, we'll probably bring that back as a second phase. Where the, the solutions that we're looking for in phase one are all furniture related, so we won't be moving any wells or moving any air ducts or anything like that. It's a matter of getting a big order of furniture that will come in and I should know the numbers on that precisely. I think we're still well under budget, if, if we were to execute on some of the things that came up in the context of that space reconfiguration work, it'll probably be a phase two. So there were several improvements suggested to public areas of the library, including potentially a nursing mother's lounge as, I can't remember what all, altering one of the meeting room spaces to be study rooms and several other things. But if that were to come back, we're getting pricing on that and we would come back to you with a second, a second phase of the program done.
Yeah, sorry, going, going back just on the, a couple of questions, I guess. On the cyber insurance, that, did that come in at what you estimated or what you thought it would be for a cost perspective?
Yes, I think it was, I think the contract we signed was for five different coverages, it came out 10,000, 10,900, I think that was. And so we will still have to get liability, we'll have to get coverage for outages, which we have not done. And we've asked for coverage of up to $1 million in liability insurance for loss of service. And we haven't got a quote on that yet. We did get a quote back for flood insurance just this week, it's the first one, it's the only one that we've gotten, it's like, yeah. It's really expensive and it's just the buildings and none of the contents. So if we were to decide to insure any of the contents against flood damage, it would be another fee altogether. I am, I have floated, I will float it back through the city to see if it accomplishes all the things that they were hoping to achieve with the, the buildings. But yeah, I think our total bill will increase by, you know, whatever, another 50% beyond what we had, what we've already, but still within our budget, what we had budgeted. But yeah, it is, I was surprised, not surprised, I guess, flood insurance is very expensive. And it would ensure.
And we're required, and we're required to carry flood, flood insurance?
According to the I G A, and so that is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is for, to fully ensure the buildings, Maine and Reynolds, Carnegie, we already have covered, so it's just Maine and Reynolds. And there's a cap in terms of how far they will cover and it's not that much, but that's, but that's for the city to write back. It's not like, they can't, it's not going to be flood coverage to replace $60 million in loss. All, all they will ensure is up to, I think, five or six million in loss damage.
Yeah.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that, which is the technical question? I mean, since the parts of the building that would be damaged, at least in Maine, I'm not sure what the situation is with Reynolds or in high hazard zone. Are we not constrained in some ways about rebuilding or do we know what's allowed in that? I think it would be good to understand that.
I don't know about the constraints for rebuilding, I, you know, the insurance money would not be enough to even sniff rebuilding if there were structural damage to the building here at Maine. What I'm trying to see if it's covered is if it covers the HVAC stuff that's in.
Yeah.
So we did submit like the, what the city presumed the value of all of the objects, the systems-related objects in the basements are not bugs.
Yeah.
Yes, that kind of stuff, but systems related. That dollar amount was submitted and I just want to make sure that's covered and what they're talking about is covered within that building loss. So building loss would include the systems like the HVAC system, we have the intake valves, all that stuff is in the basement of Maine Library.
And that makes sense, I think though it might be useful to get an opinion from the city about what is allowed for reconstruction if there is structural damage to the building, have that in our files. Doug, do you agree? I mean, in some parts of the city, I know if you're in the high hazard zone, they won't let you rebuild.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, I, I also wonder, are they still covering, well, I guess if it's a requirement? Is it, if it's, there's two insurance policies on this building, you know? But I, I will note that just from a administrative thing, David. It's easier when you get to the end of one topic to stop and let us have comments and then we can move on to the next one. Just as I sit here online, it's not preferable for me to be online, but it's, it's easier for us to kind of, to comment on that just from a procedural standpoint. Yeah, so I think, I guess we can ask them, I, they may not give us a, yeah, what happens if there's a, you know, damage? Can we even rebuild, it might just be good for us to know.
Yeah, I'll find out. I have a clarification on the the systems in the basement before I send it off to the city for review, but I hope that'll be forthcoming soon, I'll remind the insurance agent tomorrow.
Did you have other questions on what David's covered so far, Doug?
I had another question on on the, the IT systems for the North Boulder Library. Are we, have we already purchased that equipment or is the city purchasing that equipment? Like, that's going to go into that to connect to the IT system, our IT system?
We have, it is in the budget for the current build-out, so, you know, so it is money that was contributed to the budget that the city holds for purchasing the equipment.
Okay.
So including the sorting system and the cameras and all of that, so all of those are included within that budget.
I don't know if they have.
Do you have like an estimated, are they gonna, are we gonna release eventually an estimated like opening date for the?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we, we, I, I feel 99% sure if, if we can get to April 15th, that will be open by June 1st. That's kind of what we're planning, tentatively is that we'll open the doors. Celine, who's the manager there, I've given her permission, like, if we're ready three days before that, we're going to unlock the doors and put it on social media and people can show up, or two weeks, I mean, really, when we're ready to go, we'll open the doors. The grand opening party, we have not landed on a date yet, I think they were looking at late June or early July and we're still trying to work that out. So that will be the big party with speeches and stilt walkers and jugglers, banjos, taco trucks, like, donuts. Whatever, paper airplane contest, it's going to have everything, make sure you get that one on your calendar when it comes out.
All right, thank you.
But I don't, I don't know when that's. And I think that's it, like, we are, we are in the process of advertising lots of jobs, I believe there were 10 posted this month, we're down to three, the others are being interviewed. Libby, our new HR manager began a couple of weeks ago, she's hit the ground running and going gangbusters. And Maria and Andres, who you met at a previous meeting, now have almost three or four weeks under their belt. We've placed an order to replace the doors here after 10 years they're not working, which is exciting. ten years they're not working, which is exciting. It'll take twelve weeks. The the shipment time on a lot of things is a long time. So it'll take twelve weeks, but we'll get the doors fixed. And then we won't have to go out through locked back doors, through gardens, icy gardens and all that kind of stuff. It's gonna be amazing. And that's the end of my report.
Okay. Sylvia, did you have any questions? I'm seeing silence, so I'm guessing no. Doug, anything more from you? Okay, great. Kim, I'm going to suggest that we actually move your item up since our trustee matters may take a little time to talk about. Are you ready for that?
Yes, yep, yep. You should have a copy of the annual administrative resolution in the packet. And that contains all of the, it it's confirming everything that you've been doing. I believe there's still a blank in the accountancy paragraph. But if you want to reaffirm everything you've been doing, all you have to do is approve the resolution as presented. If you want to make changes, would be changes to who you want to complete certain matters that you're required as a board by law to complete. Most of the things in there are to either the accountant, to David, or to us for the legal things. So it's pretty straightforward. It provides a great list, though, for anybody coming along to see all the things that need to happen annually and the deadlines for them.
And who would go into this blank for the accountancy? I hadn't seen that in anything we had before.
Yeah, so typically you you have an accountant that you've engaged. You can put that accountant in there, or if you want, you can put David in, and then David will make sure the accountant does the work.
It seems to me like it's simplest if we just do the director. It's the director every place else, and then the director has the authority. Does that make sense to everybody else?
Makes sense.
Doug and Sylvia? Okay.
That way we wouldn't have to amend it if we changed.
District Director, I think, is the way you have it phrased elsewhere, so.
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any changes to this? I've worked through most of it, so. Okay.
I have, I have no changes to it, but I did have one question about those. It says that the audit, audited financial results will be submitted by July thirty first. And so I guess, I suppose the auditor has you know, begun that process or will be getting that process soon?
They, they I think maybe planned to begin in March. Jennifer's not here tonight. I know that we've been talking to, but I, I don't think there, until we close the books and have everything done from the previous year, which I don't know that we're done with that yet, but yeah, then he will begin.
Yeah. And it would be typical.
Twenty twenty three, but sorry.
Yeah, sorry. It would be typical for them to start in March. This year, I wouldn't be a bit surprised if if we end up being a little bit late just because of all the activity. But it's okay to request an extension of time on that audit as well. I've got one district that's now two years behind, so.
And that will be twenty twenty three, then? It's an audit for twenty twenty three?
Yes.
The fiscal, okay, the calendar year, I suppose, that's our fiscal year.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there anything from you? Okay. Anybody else? You got a motion to approve the annual administrative resolution of the Boulder Public Library District for twenty twenty four? That, okay, Kara moves. Your second, Sam's second. Okay, take your pick, Sam or Doug. Okay.
Sam's fine.
All those in favor? All those in favor? I, okay, that passes. And then, so while we're here, was there anything else from your legal report you wanted to call out, Kim?
No, I think there is the discussion in there about the personnel matter, which we added the potential for an executive session at the end of the meeting. But just to advise you in the public session, that matter has been resolved. There is one deadline left to expire, but I don't think it's going to be an issue.
So. And so is there anyone who feels they need more information about this matter? That is what we would be discussing in the executive session. Remembering that employee matters are really not our bailiwick, but if you want to know what's been going on, it's been going on for a while. Okay?
Thanks for handling it, Ken.
Yeah.
You bet. Yeah, David, David and Jennifer have been working on it very hard, and Libby.
And Libby.
Very hard as well.
scrambling today.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. Okay, to go back to trustee matters, let's do the easy stuff first. Discussion of future meeting dates. Back in, I think it was late October or November when we went to decided we didn't have to meet every week, we could meet every other week. We were thrilled at that notion, I think, and decided that we could also do one meeting in person and one virtual. And so that's the way the advance agenda is set up for the rest of the year. I'm hearing from some folks that there may be preference now that we're only meeting twice a month to do those meetings in person, knowing that they will be hybrid meetings and some people will be virtual. So I just wanted to toss that out and see where people were at if you wanted to to change that. I think we need to kind of make a decision just so Celia isn't always trying to figure out whether this is a virtual meeting or an in-person meeting from a logistical standpoint. And this is your discussion since it really, you know, I'm a short timer, so. Sylvia?
Oh, well, I mean, as someone who, as you know, is frequently on the road, obviously, I would prefer if we have always have the option to attend virtually. Just, you know, that allows me to continue to have good attendance, even though I'm, you know, all over the place. So I'm definitely in favor of, you know, keeping the virtual if we can.
Yeah, I don't think there's any question about keeping the virtual. It's always hybrid. It's just whether we are going to have every meeting have both a physical and a virtual option, or some meetings will be all virtual.
Yeah, I, as I shared with you, Johnny, I I prefer to meet in person whenever I'm able to, knowing that there should always be a hybrid option. I just feel like I engage better. And I receive and retain the information a little better. That's just me personally. And I think if we're only meeting twice a month, and even there may be some months where we only meet once, if we have a, we see a light month, that it makes sense to me to do those in person, as long as it's not a great imposition on you or your staff, David. You know, I would want to be sensitive to that.
I'm in the same, I'm in the same boat, you are. I had my fill of virtual.
Yeah, but I would like to let Celia speak too, because she had a different opinion.
Well, I just, my suggestion is as long as we're having more than one a month, two to three, to keep the virtual option for a portion of them. It is much simpler preparation wise and planning. And I think the hybrid's great, but there's occasionally hiccups with it. And when everybody's on Zoom for those virtual calls, then I can hear a lot better myself. And it's just, you know, then there's the catering and the expense of that. So yeah, my suggestion is to keep it every other one or just the special meetings virtual, but of course, whatever is the pleasure of the group we would accommodate.
Yeah, I don't need catering. If that's a barrier to meeting in person, don't worry about it for me.
I don't actually have an opinion on this.
I don't, I don't have an opinion.
I would love to weigh in, but I'm happy however this goes, so.
So Sylvia or Doug?
Um, yeah, I I prefer the, like Sam, I think it's just I engage better if I'm in person. It's difficult for me at home. Today I'm in a hotel room, but difficult for me at home because I don't really have an office, unfortunately. So although I, you know, I am sensitive to that. I I realize that it's, it's, you know, people have to come and and that sort of thing, so. And maybe we, you know, if in the summer, I think a couple of things. Maybe in the summer we go to one virtual, you know, one, but like during the quote unquote school year or something, we we might keep them hybrid like this. I'd also say that maybe if there's a snow day or something, like where we get significant weather or something, we we make a call, you know, by by noon or something, that, you know, that we're gonna go all virtual for a meeting or something. And that probably doesn't make your life any easier, Celia, but it's like and you know, whatever time, you know, maybe, maybe by five PM or something. And that way, if it's snowy, we don't force people to to trudge through the snow. So, yeah.
I will say that bringing in two new trustees makes me think that, at least for the first maybe six months, that we have two new people, it would be good to meet more in person because otherwise it would be hard to I think that would be an easier way to integrate two new people than
Yeah.
to do it over virtual.
Okay. So I'm hearing we should shift them to in person, knowing that that also is always a hybrid option. And then you guys can revisit in the summer and see if you want to do some switching. Kim, I don't think we have any notice problems, whether we're virtual or in person, as long as we have noticed that it's hybrid. Is that correct?
Good evening. The library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
That's correct.
Buenas noches. La biblioteca se cerrará en quince minutos. Por favor concluya sus actividades en la biblioteca y sorga de la licencia. Gracias.
Sylvia, did you have another comment? Sorry.
No, 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 I, that was, I think this is the right direction. I mean, the other thing, and this is, you know, again, echoing what Sam said and what you said. I also think there's something to be said for physically being in the library as the person who doesn't get to be there as often as I'd like to be. You know, being there for the meetings and having that camaraderie with all of you around the table. I feel like that that makes us a better board too. So I'm sorry, Celia.
Okay, so Celia, why don't you coordinate and I coordinate offline about the advanced agenda and changing those dates. And we're in the process of turning that advanced agenda document over to Celia. And Celia, can you screen share with me for a minute?
We should be, yeah, your host.
Okay. Oh, but I'm not on Zoom, so that doesn't help, does it?
Name's up there.
Oh, is it interesting? But I haven't zoomed. I haven't logged into Zoom. Well, so rather than go through all of that, so I just wanted to let you guys know that in, you know, with Microsoft Teams, we now have a shared document place in OneDrive. And Amy set up a folder for us that's called BPLD Trustees. And I have started to create subfolders within that. You may recall that we had some folders in Google Drive that we just had reference materials. So if you're in there and you see that in the general folder, I've put over the things that we had in Google Drive, the agenda planning, the adopted policies and procedures. We have the budget memos. Right now, this bylaws that we just approved are in there. I'll take out the drafts. So this is just reference. You know, you may want to add more things in there as you go along, but I tried to just have the things I thought you might want to review. And then I've created two subfolders for the two committees we've set up. There's a budget and finance subcommittee and a governance committee. My thinking being this is a place that folks can, you know, share their information. There's also a trustee orientation folder in there right now, which David's taking over. So this is a tool for all of us to use. You know, we can't do meetings in here, but we can certainly have some reference materials and share things.
This should be in the OneDrive?
It's in the OneDrive, yeah.
I don't see it in mine. I must be doing something wrong.
If you go up to, I just had to figure this out. If you go up to the little thing with the dots on the far left.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the waffle.
And then you click on the.
The OneDrive from there.
And it's SharePoint. I don't know. That's how I got it.
SharePoint.
Oh, SharePoint, okay.
And I have set these up so that David and Celia and Jennifer and Amy are all owners along with others, so that as we switch in and out, we don't have to worry about losing things. So as we go forward, we may want to use this tool more and more, but I just wanted to let you know that was there. I was trying to move the things we had over. Okay, so now the difficult thing. We learned today that Benita has been talking to elected officials and making statements that the board is not transparent, not accountable, chaotic and inefficient. And you know, that's really a violation of our bylaws. Our bylaws say the president is the authorized spokesperson for the board. But I think it also speaks to a deeper problem. We have the retreat coming up, and I talked to David this afternoon about this is probably something we need to surface at the retreat. But I am concerned that this is going on as we are entering into the selection process for the trustees and Benita is our representative. And I think she's, I don't know what, trying to create impressions with her peers. The council people don't know us. I just thought we needed to talk about it and see if we think we want to start talking to people to counter this messaging. I was sort of caught, taken aback by that when I learned it. Now, we've heard it from two different sources.
The library will be closing in ten minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
Well, a little taken aback to hear it. Wish Benita was here to engage in a discussion, but I do think it's it should be on the agenda for the retreat.
She sent a meeting this morning saying she wasn't going to be here.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I yeah, I heard similar stuff, so it's disappointing because I feel like we've all actually worked pretty well together, including Benita. So I don't you know, hopefully she can clear it up or, you know, you know, maybe they were taken out of context or something like that, so. You know, I think we've worked really hard and really well. And, you know, if there's any person that wants to ask for information or, you know, I think that as a trustee, they can ask for that information and it's all public. We've all been pretty forthright and I think good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, so. Yeah, I I'm interested to hear from her what, you know, what this is about, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's really frustrating, chaotic.
Chaotic and inefficient?
I wholeheartedly disagree with that assessment, not knowing what the rest of the context of that was. I mean, we do everything we do, we do in public, literally in public, like right now. And I think the amount of work that we've been able to do and the amount of time that we've had to do it has been a thing, if not efficient. So I don't know, I don't know. I would, I would love to hear more context, but I, I I disagree for what it's worth. I'm concerned that we don't I mean, I guess I'm concerned that we don't have the opportunity to sort of get all on the same page about this before we are potentially meeting with new trustee candidates next week. But I guess.
I don't think we'll, we'll be meeting with any, oh, yeah, we do have the Q and A.
Doing like a Q and A.
Yeah, and and but, you know, we're putting together, I'm putting together some slides and I'll share it with the the board. And I've already talked to Benita about it, that, you know, just basically our roles and responsibilities and you know, what we you know, you know, what we intend to, you know, your time commitments and you know, signing on to the library bill of rights and that sort of stuff. So pretty basic information, but when I get back into town, I'll, I'm gonna work on that and share it with everyone if they have any comments. But yeah, it's, you know, hopefully it's just a misunderstanding and, you know, we can move on productively.
I think we have a good process for the applications and we have Doug with Benita as our representatives. I feel like we'll, we'll be okay as long as we all do our part to spread the word that we're looking for. like we'll, we'll be okay as long as we all do our part to spread the word that we're looking for applicants. And then this particular issue, I think the retreat is the place to handle it.
Okay. Sylvia, anything to add? Doug?
Um, I, yeah, I, I don't really know. I mean, it's hard to understand. I, I, I would like to think that if we had concerns, you know, we would be able to share them with one another and address them as a board should together. Um, so, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't really know unless I kind of have a better understanding about what, what specifically she's saying, what, what, what exactly are those things that she's alleging? Um, it's really hard to say, but, um, I, you know, I personally, if I had concerns, I, I think I would feel comfortable enough to speak with all of you about them at a table. It's disappointing.
Okay. Okay. So David will work with the facilitator to, um, let us figure out a, a process for how to deal with this. Um, I don't know if anyone wants to try to talk to Benita in the meantime, to.
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
La biblioteca se cerrará en cinco minutos. Por favor concluya sus actividades en la biblioteca y salga del edificio. Gracias.
I mean, I think if whoever maybe has heard this directly could address it with her. I don't know what was.
I could, I could bring it up with, I, I, I was thinking about calling or sending her a message and just say, hey, you know, let's talk about this, because I don't want it to get between us.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, Doug. And, and it's not, it's, it hasn't been to us. It's been elected people contacting us, people who we have.
Right.
That's what I mean, is that whoever's actually heard that should say something.
Yeah. Okay, good. Well, disappointing.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that's the last thing on the agenda, unless folks have, um, any other updates?
Well, just, you know, I'm a big fan of the gallery on the ramp, and Grace G.'s current exhibit is really worth stopping. Uh, there's a reception on March eleventh, but you can also see it anytime. It's called "Bubbling Up", and so she asks people of color to, uh, write certain experiences of discrimination on bubbles, and then, uh, and then, uh, white people can respond on pieces of paper, and they're, they're there on the ramp now, and it's really powerful exhibits. I think it's really, it's really great. Grace is a, I think she lives in, she's a Boulder County resident. So, kudo, yet another fabulous exhibit on the go, there we go.
Good.
I'd like, I'd like to put a plug in for filling out your survey, uh, for self-evaluation. There are six of nine. There's no tracking on it, so we don't know who has not, but, uh, I know Kim hasn't. Um, but two, two others have not as well, so we can fill those out in the next few days. I would really appreciate it, because I wanna give that, turn that over to the facilitator on Friday. That's my email, right?
It's in your email?
I know, I know, one of the other ones is.
Hey, Mr. Green.
And Doug, you have your hand raised?
I, I have.
Um, yeah. Uh, since it's Black History Month, I had two, um, things. If, if anyone's around, I, I have no affiliation with this event, although I'm a member of the organization. Uh, the NAACP on Sunday is having an event at Mackey. Um, it's free and open to the public. You just have to register. Um, you can do that through their site. It's, um, they have a musician playing, um, a woman, and then they also have a person that was wrongly convicted, it's like the Freedom Project or whatever, giving a, a talk. Um, and also, uh, library kind of book-oriented, uh, this movie, "Origin", came out, if you haven't seen it yet. It's on, uh, it's about, uh, the woman who wrote, uh, uh, I, now, her name is blanking, but she wrote "Cast" and she wrote "Warrant of Another Son". It's about her writing of the book "Cast". It's pretty good. Um, so if you have a chance to go see that, it's actually a pretty good movie, a really good movie, actually, so.
Who's the name again, Doug?
Uh, "Origin", O-R-G-I-N.
Thank you.
Yeah, but there's a lot of library stuff in there. It's like, uh, one of the things that she's, uh, you know, there's a scene in Berlin in nineteen thirties of, you know, and about the book burning and then the hidden library in Berlin, and, and then, you know, the, the movie's about the writing of the book, so kind of a lot of library book-oriented stuff, so, it's a good one. Thank you. Yep, Isabella would.
Thanks, Chris.
Uh, "Warrant of Another Son" is an amazing book, and I'm reading "Cast" right now. I was like, well, I better get that book and read it now, so. Yeah.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? All right, thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.
Time. Record time.
Record time. Light agenda, that's the big difference.